So as a school teacher, this is nothing new for me. Everyone decides to sit back there. But we'll go ahead and get started so that we're somewhat on time, right? I'll want to. So welcome to the public meeting for the town plan here with the Planning Commission. 2024 is a year to rewrite a town plan, so we wanted to make sure that we reached out to our neighbors and that we got as much input as we possibly could. I will be the overlord for today, if that's a proper term. My name is Jared Weiss. A lot of you probably don't know me. I'm new here. I moved here in August. I bought the Yellow Farmhouse on East Callas, just south of the village, the old farmhouse café, the big old yellow house there, so that's where I live. But so we're here to get your input, your thoughts about what we should be including in the town plan. So we have some things here just to tell you about what a town plan is and the Planning Commission, and so I'll let some of the other esteemed members of the Planning Commission take over for just a second.
My name's Gary Root. I've lived here for 42 years, and I live on Route 14 in East Callas, about three quarters of a mile south of his house. A town plan, is this the time for me to talk about a town plan and everybody to introduce themselves?
Do a quick introduction and then we'll come back.
Okay, I'm Vicki Arthur. I've also only lived here maybe a year and a half. Got a house on Adamant Road, close to Adamant, and I have a background with floodplain management. I'm a contractor for the NFIP. I don't know how you feel about them these days, but I mostly, I work on developing the maps. I have a cartography GIS background. And I saw that they needed help on the, I guess, the floodresiliency section of the town plan, so I volunteered, and then eventually I joined the Planning Commission.
Hi, everybody. I'm Melanie Keane. We're really psyched to have Vicki and other new members, Jared, to Planning Commission. I think we have an empty seat, actually, just saying. And two empty seats, right, with our chair who insists on retirement from Planning Commission. Been here since 1999 in the Adamant area on Martin Road, since 2009, and on Planning Commission for a few years. And it's great work, just saying, if anybody wants to join us. Thanks for coming, everybody.
John, do you want to take over?
John McCullough, I'm planning for most of the time administrator. Been here since '73.
And I'm Jan Olson, and I've been the chair for the last five years, I think. And I do appreciate all of you coming here this afternoon and really sharing your thoughts, opening your minds, sharing the food, you know, eat while you're up, while we get you going. And with that, I think Gary was gonna tell us what the town plan was about.
The Planning Commission is primarily responsible for drafting two town documents. One is the zoning that controls how, controls land use and development in the town, and the other is the town plan, which is an aspirational document primarily. As an aspirational document, a town plan really is supposed to list and develop what the town really wants for its growth and future. Town plan is an eight-year document drafted by the Planning Commission and approved by the Select Board. And it's a valuable plan. As an aspirational document, it's valuable just as a statement of who we are. I have an acquaintance that moved to Callas because he and his wife were looking at a number of different towns, and so they read the town plan from each of the towns, and they moved here because of our town plan. You know, an engineer working.
Yeah, I read the town plan.
And a town plan is also, as a, along with the zoning bylaws for the town, the town plan is a document that is, that controls certain aspects of development. So the zoning administrator goes almost entirely off the zoning bylaws, but the Development Review Board, which is the second tier of authority in terms of zoning approval, they are experts not just in implementing what's in the zoning bylaws, but also in the town plan. And then if you take another step up, if you go outside of the town, as far as the state agencies that have authority over development issues within the town, the town plan is the thing that they look at. They'll, they might look at zoning, but they might not, but they always look at the town plan to make decisions on where things, where certain things can happen and where they shouldn't happen, and what things the town aspires to, and what things the town really doesn't want to have happen in town. So the town plan is a very important document from that standpoint. The town plan is also the primary authority for the aspirations of the town in terms of getting grants. So if we write grants for things, those people are looking at the town plan to see, to see that the will of the town supports the intent of the grant.
Yeah, so we are glad you're here. Some of us came a month early. So excited to be here. But the question we have is where do you see Callas in eight years, right? So a town plan is in effect for eight years, so you're kind of looking out to the future and trying to figure out where is it that we want to be. And these are some of the things that Gary was talking about, right? It's to put the power back in local decision-making, influence the state when it comes to regulatory proceedings, allows us to get grants, right? Allows us to have a plan so that we can say, and with that plan, we need these grants, right? And other funds for community development and housing. So that's kind of what the plan is for, and that's why we're here, to get what you guys, what you think, what our neighbors think, what the community thinks about this next eight years, and where we should be in the next, those eight years. So these are the sections of the town plan. Now, I hope you all did your homework. We are going through each section laboriously and taking forever on it, so hopefully you're, that's why there's brownies. Now, what we're really gonna do is, you can see, we've put some post-its around the wall, and we're gonna go through here in a second and just give you a quick rundown of the sections, and then we're gonna ask you your thoughts on the different sections. So, and we wanted to give you some visuals. Visuals always help, right? Make you think of some things. So we've got some of the different sections here that we were gonna go through, right? So let's see. History and demographics. I don't know if you guys wanna change our history or demographics. Go ahead and throw that up. I'm one of the other issues, if you'd like. But that is, that is, I think, the first part of the town plan, right? Just kind of going through the history.
Usually the history and demographics. Last one was 2010 that we did. 2020, and then, John, what is it, the American?
Community survey.
I'm gonna draw from that as much as possible, but the 2020 decennial is gonna be the, really, where all the stuff is.
All right, so next we have land use development. If anybody wanna talk about that slide real quick?
So land use development. This is, interestingly, a map of our town of Callas, kind of centered in. The red area is the historic overlay district. Anything orange is village district. Yellow is rural residential. Green is conserved. I can't remember what the pink was.
I think that's River Corridor.
That's town forest.
Oh, the town forest. And probably the pink is Malone's Resource Recreational.
There's the other pink is shoreland.
Yeah. Oh, the shoreland.
The darker pink, yeah.
Yeah, and the other green on the other side there. This green up here is Malone's property, which is Resource Recreational. So what happens is, this is land development. Do we wanna change any villages? Do we want to change any rural residential? What are the things you might wanna change?
How's it? Anybody? We know that this is a big, big issue statewide, nationwide, and so how we, how we want to go forward with housing, and how we do it smart, and what we need to do when it comes to housing. Can't see it on there, but also like Airbnbs, and right, and those short-term rentals and those kind of things, so those issues. Anybody? Feel free to jump in.
Okay, irrelevant. And you're gonna see that some of these topics interrelate with each other. Basically, we have three commercial areas in our town. That's where the three stores are. And so the planning powers that be want us to look, is there any availability of growth or development? I personally like the word sustainability, but anyway, they go with economic development. If you wanted to develop a new commercial center in the town, where would you put it?
One of the big issues at the last major rewrite of the town plan for economic development was the development of access to the internet. We've made tremendous strides in that regard, but there are still areas of town that are, where the internet is not easily accessible, so.
Next slide. So agriculture. This could also be economic development, because your agriculture of houli flats and schoolhouse farm are an economics resource to us. If you decide how we wanna do a plan, do you want to have more of these kinds of farms for future sustainability? If there were an economic downturn, how would Callas survive?
Could I ask a quick question there? Are you not?
No, you can ask.
Pete's Greens, the former Legere's, which is a huge farm.
Yeah.
Is that, is that a positive impact on our town in terms of?
Don't know.
The economy?
I don't know. I can't answer that because of the way, but you're right. I forgot about that. They don't longer that call that land, Pete's Greens. What do they call it, John? Sunnee something or another?
I don't know the name of it now.
Legere farm.
What?
Legere farm.
Legere, yeah. And see, it used to be that they sold the vegetables there.
Yeah.
Now it's built, I think, basically for raising carrots. I mean, and things like that, which it goes to Pete's Greens, which, yeah, it diversifies out by the state, but I don't think we, as a town, get anything for that, other than what he pays in property tax. Tell us, people do, however, keep asking about corn and strawberries.
Flood resilience. I can say that Callas has a great floodplain ordinance. It is up to snuff. I've looked it over. So I think we also, you know, we have river corridors, everything. I'd say like in terms of regulations, we're good, but we all know there's a lot, you know, when it floods, there's a lot of damages to the roads. I know Curtis Pond, the dam there is a hot topic that probably could fill up an entire town plan on its own. So, you know, there's all things to think about in the future.
And I think we had thought about putting the emergency management, the new emergency management, under the flood resilience, possibly, I don't know if it, that's something. Okay, next one. Natural resources and conservation. Very important for our town. How do we preserve the natural resources that we have and working with the conservation commission, where do we conserve? And there's a natural, there's a natural, I don't wanna call it conflict, but there's a natural, where do you develop and conserve? And we have so much land that is there, and we really have very little developable land, so it's really an interesting, I don't know, it's about dilemma, I guess. Anyway, here we go. Our historic sites. If you've seen the new memorial hall, this was, this is an older picture, right?
It was last spring, maybe. I'm trying to think.
Yeah, yeah. Anyway, yeah, there are historic sites, Old West Church. What do you wanna do to keep those, and how do you wanna keep them? What do we wanna do with municipal services? We've already heard that the town office is small. Are you gonna rebuild it? What are we gonna do with the garage? Is there any way that we can get back to using the town hall? I mean, the picture on the left is where old, the script of Old Town was being played that day, and the group was meeting there and upstairs, and you could look out and see. So it would be nice to have certain nice things there. Energy is a big one.
So I made a lot of these slides, and I had to help making them look pretty for my partner, but I will say, don't worry, that is a stock image of solar panels in the wood mill. It is, I don't know where it is. It's not in Callas. Probably not even in Vermont, so it's just supposed to, you know, get you thinking and kind of rile you up and get your creative juices flowing while, before we start this.
And actually, what we have in the current town plan states that, that basically our solar has to be within the confines of the house that you're at or the property that you're at. We have not, we don't have a lot of big, overextended solar fields. What you wanna do with electrical vehicles and, and all of that, that's education for updating your house if you wanted, you have energy efficiency, and how do you wanna go about doing that? It's part of all of energy. So transportation is the same thing with municipal services, right?
Yeah, same thing.
And, and I mean, they kind of tie in. We don't really have public transportation. At one time, just sharing, we had an energy, start of an energy committee, and we were looking at where to put a park and ride, and we couldn't find a place for a park and ride. So the rural transportation, RTC bus goes, does it still stop at the post office? It used to.
It was, but I think they might have changed it.
They probably changed it, because they only had one trip in and one trip back into Morrisville. So if you want to have affordable housing, I mean, I'm just putting this out as you just think about it, if you wanna have affordable housing, people have to work somewhere, and they have to drive. And I think in the last demographics, we saw that almost every house or every property owner has at least two cars. So if you build affordable housing and you put up eight houses, are you gonna have to put 16 parking lots or spaces for 16 cars? How do you wanna not do that? Transportation. I mean, these are all, these are all the interrelated issues to think about. Kari, you can talk to it.
So Kari Bradley, I'm not on the commission, but I volunteer to help out with the education chapter as a longtime school board member, and the district, of course, is a separate municipality at this point, but we happen to be doing a strategic planning process right now, in the final stages. We have some draft goals and action steps, and we're obviously at a crossroads with education. How are we going to maintain a sustainable educational system throughout the community is a big, big question. And the other thing I'll mention is that also required, this part is early childhood, childcare, so that's something that we should talk about as well.
Recreation and arts.
Yeah, so there's a, there's a lot of things in a community when it comes to recreation and arts, and we love the trails and all the different things that we have and that's available to us, so how do we wanna continue to promote that, right? How do we wanna continue to sustain it and help it grow in, not just recreation, but in the arts and in all of those fields? Because we have great things to begin with, so how do we continue to support it? And in what ways does the town really support recreation and the arts? Okay, you can, we can actually go all the way back.
Okay.
To the one that just lists everything. So this is when we wanted to give you some time to talk to each other, grab some Post-it notes, something to write with, and we've put the major sections of the town plan on the wall. We wanna hear what you think, right? So what, what ideas do you have? What, what questions even do you have, right? So we wanted to just give you some time to talk to one another, put those things up, and then we'll come back and we will kind of go through them and we'll talk about it, and we'll see what questions you do have. We're here to listen. We're not here to give the ideas. We wanna hear your ideas. And so we wanna give you some time. So take a Post-it note and a pencil, go around. What things do you, do you think of, right? What, what do you want to see in recreation and arts or transportation, economic development? What do you wanna see? What should we be doing as we write a plan? What kind of things should we be doing?
And what you might wanna think of eight years from now?
Yeah.
What do you want Callas to look like?
And then for people on Zoom, you can just shoot those in the chat if you want, and I'm monitoring it, so I can, I can even write it on a sticky note if you want, and then put it up on the board for you. That could be fun for me.
It's like you're here. It's like you're in the room. So we'll just give you a few minutes, 10, 15, yes, go ahead.
I'm wondering if we know what Callas demographics are. Are we, in fact, how old are we, you know? Are we mostly old people?
Yes. It's like over 50%, over the age of 65, I think. Over 50% over the age of 65.
Over 50%. So we got a lot of big houses for all those old people.
And what if all of us decide to have poor help all of a sudden at the same time? Is there a place here in town where we might want some kind of cogenerational house? I mean?
Yeah, and if there's something that doesn't look like it fits or feel like it fits?
Put it on the board.
We put the other one. Like just, we wanna hear it, right?
Quick question. So when Jan was preparing for this and asking for these supplies, she asked for specifically different color sticky notes. Is there a meaning to the color of the sticky notes?
I think we've gone away from that. Just put them where you want.
What's gonna happen is wherever the most Post-it notes go, might tell us what the priority should be.
I was just gonna point that out, like, you know, if no one puts anything under transportation, it's not that it's not something we're not gonna talk about, but you know, it's not a top huge priority, right? So this'll help us too, just visually, we can see it. If there's one or a little lonely Post-it note on transportation, we know that's not necessarily a priority. Still something we're gonna talk about, but not necessarily one of our top priorities. But yeah, we're getting by with the.
Couldn't it just be something that you had questions about?
It could be.
Or you could say about?
Yeah, it could be. It could just be the people haven't thought about it. We're gonna go around and we'll go back again.
And the question.
And see if there's questions.
You could ask, you could even put it in as a question.
Yeah, if you have a question about one of the sections, go ahead and throw it on a Post-it.
If you have a question that you want to remain anonymous, then you can just put it up there. But you're also, you're also encouraged, and you're encouraged to ask questions so that everybody can be stimulated by that.
Pleasure.
So I tried to inhale the town plan from 2016. 75 pages. Anyway, I blasted two of the last 75. One statistic that stuck out to me in contrast to what was just said, it said, as of 2010, the median age was 46, but 88% of the population of Callas was 60, was under 65. And somebody just said we're 50, at least 50% over 65.
Not much different.
Oh, really? When I looked at it, that's what I, I don't know.
So I'd be hearing, well, Vermont is an aging state, but I thought that that was interesting, that 88% was under 65 in 2010.
Well, how many people in this room have turned 65 since then?
Exactly. That's why I'm shocked that over 50% are over 65 now.
That's a fair question, because demographics too, I mean, these, these guys all know, when you build a plan though, that makes a difference. I have four kids under the age of 12.
Yay!
That's what Kath Fair said too. She said, she said something to me. She goes, "You look like a tax base." But that does, that brings a push-pull as well, right? You've got the, the services and the things needed for, for an aging population, while at the same time, you've got a whole nother section, you know? I look and I go, "Where do my kids play basketball?" You know what I mean? So they're totally different things, so it does have a push-pull aspect to it, yeah.
It's sort of along the same lines. I have a question about where, what this meeting, what kind of role it plays in, what happens after here? When I look around the room and I think about what, who's represented here in the room, and are we, we are clearly not a great cross-section of the town here. I mean, everyone was invited.
Right.
But the question is, are we making, are we the only people who are going to weigh in? I know that people will be invited to call you or write to you or whatever, but how aggressive must we be as a whole community across all of our cultural divides to make sure that we're getting what we want? That we're all getting what we want?
We, we have, as, the Planning Commission has really four primary sources of guidance for what goes into the town plan. Obviously, it's our own opinion, and as, you know, we all live here, and we all look around, and we're, and we particularly are, are intent on reflecting all of those different things, you know? We have to look at economic development. We can't just say, oh, we wanna conserve everything. So that's a, that's a big piece of it. What goes on with the town committees is a big piece of, we will, we will solicit information and gather opinions and needs from all of the town commissions and committees. You guys, you know, this is really, you're absolutely right. People who are silent all the time, they don't, they don't weigh in with as much authority as people who participate, and this is one very important piece of participation. And we also are directed by the state. A lot of the elements in the town plan are things that are mandated. So, you know, that's, that's, that's where, that's how we form our, our guidance.
Well, one question I have too is that I think there is, and this is maybe lots of water under the bridge, and I certainly wasn't knowing this until last week, but there are, there's grant money for a sort of a facilitated process to get more, to recruit people from all parts of our town to come together and weigh in. And that's a very hard process to get people to come to a meeting.
It's also a hard process to get the grants. I mean, it's, it's somewhat difficult, because you have to, I did ask the rural development, and I still haven't yet to get a comment back, and, because I wanted rural development to do, they do three town meetings, and Plainfield had it, Marshfield had it, and there's some other, other groups who do facilitating, but we had to get started. If we were to have asked for a grant, then it would have taken time to get the money applied and then to do it, and they would have been spending all of this year doing that, and we have to have a town plan done by the end of the year.
I think in terms of process, we've talked about having other town meetings or other just interested party meetings.
Or surveys.
Yeah, or surveys. We've talked about doing surveys. We've talked about going to some of the groups, Friends of Callas, some of the different things, and getting their input. So yeah, I mean, you're right. We need to try and get as much of the input as possible, because you're right, sometimes it's always the same people that will show up to stuff, right?
This is literally the same people. The usual suspects.
Right, and so we do need to do that. We've had conversations. I think our idea was to have one, to see where we were, and then to go from there and go, okay, now we need to, now we need to do X. Right, like we've debated even back and forth, do we have it in the different, the different hamlets and the different places, right? Do we do them all here? Like, we've talked about that, but we wanted to have one, to Jan's point, to get the process started. I'm new to it too, like, I, I know I'm supposed to like write parts of, I haven't done any of it, because I wanted to wait until I hear things, right? And so I think that's what we're, that's what we're doing, but your point is not lost. But your point is not lost. We do need to make sure that we get.
And, and if you wanted to be a survey taker for the planning commission, we would love it.
I mean, I was actually thinking more like, you know, pie breakfast at the school or food, food, food. Is it a free food and conversation or?
Yes.
Well, the planning commission's going to be working on this for the next six months.
Six months, yeah.
And we meet twice a month and there's food.
There always is food.
Yeah, Gary always drinks the same. And there is, by the way, food over there. So stand up, start talking.
Yeah, so take some time, grab some Post-it notes, talk to each other, and let's see what we can get. We'll give you some time to, to just think about it and give us your thoughts.
I'm distracted by the fact that there are brows.
Tobin, you're allowed to have another.
Stop talking. There are brows.
Did you? No, that's my wife.
That's your wife.
My wife. Yes, okay, yes. I just had, I had a DM.
I looked at the census data. I have to double check, but it's. Well, no, okay. According to the American Community Survey, it says twenty percent, twenty-one percent is sixty-five or older. But I remember when I looked at the twenty-ten census and like joined all the tables. Or sorry, no, no, twenty-twenty census.
Okay.
But I will, I will, I don't know if I will be able to join all the tables while I'm. I thought it was, it was like fifty percent.
So yeah, you're right there. Yep.
That's what I thought, but I'm going to have to double check one. Well, this is good.
Should turn out?
I think this is my eleventh year.
Right now, the only comment is from Scott about how the planning commission formed fifty years ago. You could scroll, if you scroll up on that little chat, you'll see it. It says, here. I never thought. Big, slightly judgmental.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, Arno Aiden.
Yeah, yeah.
We didn't do one historic, I remember, but hey. Is somebody asking a question?
No, I'm writing down and I'm going to add it to the housing. Sorry, I took your.
No.
Right down.
It's making so much more. How you about my interest in.
So the gift is owned by Sonny. I am, you know what? It's Arno Aiden, that's what. Okay, all right, fine.
And I know it's cemetery connection.
I think we're good, yeah.
Well, United jumped to a two-nil lead and then Luton came back and got a goal. So it's two-one at halftime.
Yeah, I saw that. And I was trying to, I was hoping it would be over before I left.
I, I was hoping that United. They're still saying that. I read it was all just.
She may want to talk to him about order, but he did.
They think her base is. Says Nova loves that stuff.
How you doing?
Oh, yeah. We got to talk about John's music. We got to talk about stories. So excited.
Thank you for supporting us, talking to me and supporting our idea. He moves fast.
Oh, does he?
Yes, I'm really surprised.
Sounds like it would be kind of hard to ponder that.
Because you know, well, our original idea was to go from Brooklyn up to Paragon.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because that's the corridor. And so, and up there, there's all sorts of really nice. That's where the, the black ash and the orchids. Because Swimmobile is about to go up the hill. It's about to, toward how, where it goes up the hill toward Cowland. You know that, and so it's going to be at the bottom.
Yeah, oh, I see.
I think it's the way to go.
Yeah, I don't know. What, what, what I said is that.
They should do this for more.
To sort of incorporate this green. And it's hard to do all the things that you have to do for each additional person in the city. But I did think sort of interesting that John Reese.
I know, I know. She didn't look married. She's not, she's not like. She made it all pretty hot. Maybe another time.
I could warn her.
Yes.
Yeah, a lot of people. They know what you're talking about. Do you ever notice that when someone else can't remember it, then you know, you know it, but then you can't remember it because they can either?
It's like yawning.
Yeah, it is, it's like yawning. She's forgetting, so I'm forgetting. It is, no, they're, they're fantastic questions. She's asking me, I mean, that's, yeah. I mean, I should probably just try to get my own focus. I've never. Like just try to. Just try to get them in. The struggles that we have to. I mean, she ever said, we're going to be. It's got her name, she was supposed to be. And see if I can't. Get them meeting there. There would be.
Thursday, the sixth day of another day. I have some.
They're talking. Yeah. Because they look like they stopped writing. Try to pull them back in.
So this is. I, I just, I thought maybe this.
Baby knows.
There's guys, well, if you ever, you know, they're plus-overs.
It's also a holiday weekend. It could be people out.
That's true. I, I have to say. Schools got to get it different.
They might have a different tape on it and pull that stuff down.
Did you see someone print it out?
Yeah, he said.
He prepared.
He came prepared and I appreciate.
Thing and it opened this way. They had a lot of maps interspersed. They had it very well put together. They obviously paid a consultant to do that work. And that was the smallest one I saw, and that were eighty, eighty pages or something.
I mean, I think, I think the goal would be to have a manageable town plan that is something that we can actually try to achieve, right? As opposed to just a huge document that, you know, we put together. Like, the idea is you want to get these things. As Gary put earlier, it's aspirational. Well, aspirations are only so good if you can do anything about them, right?
But I think also that there's something, there seems to be value in having the whole opus, because it represents, it represents the, the, the will of the people, hopefully. And then you pick, tend to prioritize or whatever. But I like the idea that in twenty years' time, we can look back and say, this is what we were valuing then.
Yeah, I do, I do agree with that. I think it's more the action steps.
Yeah.
In the last one, there were just so many. We're going to do these things. But I, I agree, yeah, you want to be able, for historical purposes, to go back and go, oh, wow, yeah, ten years ago, this is what we were, we stood for. This is what we wanted to appreciate.
One of the things that, that strikes me is that even as you're talking about us going around and reading all of these things, that another thing that would be useful would be, in a sense, to talk about what were all of the unfulfilled goals from last time? So what are we perhaps not thinking about right now that eight years ago us did think of?
That's a fair question. That one, I don't have an answer to, but, yeah, I mean, I think that's, that's fair. Again, evaluation of the plan, right? And go, well, what didn't we get done? And maybe what is the reason we didn't get that done? Was it because the board was small and we couldn't just get it done? Or was it it was too lofty of a goal? Or was it not the right goal, like, we thought it was, but then we got into it and it wasn't? Like, I think evaluating why things didn't happen is a good, yeah, we'll believe, you see Jan's right. I think that's a good.
Some things take a long time. How long has it taken the Curtis Pond group? Oh, my God. And then, then you have setbacks and you have to go back and start over again. I mean, really, it's not, it's just a big deal. It's a siss of this.
Any other questions or comments right now? Not necessarily about the individual things, but maybe the whole process?
You know, we have taken really good care of our town buildings. They're all rehabbed. We have a town office that we never had before, and it's paid off at the end of the year. Those are all big things, so I think those are a lot of things to be proud of.
I'm not suggesting other ones.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm giving examples.
Yeah, absolutely. It's a pleasure, right?
Yeah, I was, well, actually, I did have, when I was looking through it this morning, I was, I was having these questions, which I kind of posted intermittently there, but some things just came to mind, like, has, if anybody on the panel there knows, has local employment increased since the last town plan? Or is it about the same? There's a goal for sixty percent renewable energy in the town. I'm wondering if that's.
Obviously not.
Well, I, I'm just wondering if, well, you know, because obviously it's aspirational, and you want to say, okay, how, what's our progress? Or did we actually slip back? Food productions and food security, are we doing better with that? That's obviously a really big thing. Energy efficient buildings or energy efficiency within buildings? And obviously, high-speed communication, it sounds like we've made good headway with that, especially recently. So any of those other topics that, that just kind of came to mind?
On that, one topic about solar. There, there is an energy map which tells you how many, where the solar locations are and how many there are. Regional, Central Vermont Regional will show us all of that, I mean, and, and we can get in. And we can compare what we had in 2016 to what we have today in 2024. And I don't know what that difference is, but that can be definitely compared, and that would be an interesting thing to put into the next town. This is what we achieved, or what the town accomplished was an increase in X, Y, Z, which, you know, can, can be a positive. That, I don't know how we can measure energy efficiency of buildings, because we don't know how many people have done better insulation, who maybe applied with efficiency Vermont and did whatever they did. Or how many people actually rented, retrofitted, retrofitted a house, where none of us, I mean, we don't keep track of that, really, unless, unless eventually the listers go around and there's a, a, a different application. So when the reappraisal of our properties come, that's when you're going to know for sure what I think happened, whether there's a new building or a, a new energy efficiency in an old building and all of that.
Right now, an energy efficient building has a larger, a bigger fair market value, so it's taxed more. So, yeah, the more a building is, the more we're going to assess its value.
And the building we're in is an example of it.
Yes.
This is well insulated.
Yeah.
Since that report.
But we don't pay taxes, right?
So I think we're all thinking about sustainability, but I don't even think we have a good definition of what it means for a town. What is sustainability for a town? And, and so it's hard to work toward that, if we have such a goal like that, what does it really mean? So if you can break that down into components, then it would be easier to set specific objectives that we could then work on. We all care about it, we just don't all agree about what, or know what it is.
What does it mean for us as a town?
Yeah, as a town, yeah.
That's a fair question. A great idea. And also goes into, like, we've talked about in meetings, just vision in general, like, what is the vision? And I think that that, that leads to that. We have a vision, and then it comes to these other points, which we need to define, right? We need to say, this is what it means to us, and then here's what we're going to do about it. Which kind of might get into your point, too, like, this is, we're, what we're saying we stand for, right? Directly, like, we, we believe in this, and we're going to do these things to get there. So that's, that's good. Well, something we need to take.
That's a good question. The categories, the sections of the town plan, where do those come from? Is that somehow from the state, or is that, like, inherited from the state statute?
Do you want to flip to the last couple of slides, just so you can show everybody? We won't read them, too. But, and they don't have to necessarily be in sections, but the state does require us to address certain issues at the very end of the PowerPoint, Kari. I think we have two slides that show the statutory requirements. So these are the planning goals, but I think is the back one, which is the sections?
There's one more, oh, one more after, it's after.
Must include.
The citation of where this is all from. Right, so that's what's got to be in our town plan by statute.
That's what has to be by statute in the previous slide where it said the goals. When a town plan is, when a town plan is reviewed by the regional planning commission, that also has to meet these goals. So the interspersing between, and that's also a state statute. So that tells you how, how restricted in some ways we are.
But just counterpoint, I think there are a lot of really good ideas and concepts here that it's good to help us focus the discussion for purposes of the town plan.
So, yeah, that, that's where these categories came from, and, like, the tabled contents of the plan, that's where it comes from, the state statute.
It, it also occurs to me that there, that many of the things we want are incompatible, just as you said.
I said disconnect.
Well, they're, they're incompatible, so, for example, many of the things that we would like to see come from growth, but we also know that growth produces a lot of problems, and growth is not a model we want to keep adopting, because we got to somehow figure out how to have good things without the, having to grow.
Okay, so on that, let me just address what a couple people in other town plans have done. You hit, hit it head-on. We are going to talk about economic development, but this town cannot do it for thus and so reasons. And so if you address it that way, and, and I was on, I was on a committee that evaluated municipal plans, so I could see this. And it's not that you have to say you're going to have it, it's that, it's going to say, we know, we were told we should have it, but we can't do it. Woodbury didn't do a lot of things. They, they acknowledged they can't do a lot. Same thing with housing. I can't do X, Y, Z. Here's why, as long as you document why.
Any other questions?
Yes.
I haven't heard anyone address affordability. That's basically why I'm here.
I think affordability comes up, or at least when I was perusing the, the things, it comes up in sort of little ways in all of these different places. I mean, it's sort of, in, I don't know, I, I notice it a lot in housing and.
Transportation.
Transportation. Education.
Education, yeah, right. Providing the education and making it still affordable for us, yeah. That's a good point.
I love that social security, basically. And I'm sure there's a lot of other people like me here.
Yes.
Yes, I mean, I'm, I sold some land December of 2022. I've got another land sale in the works, and I've got a third piece that I'm working on selling, and this is the only way I've been surviving.
Is the selling plan, yeah. That's, I mean, so.
Actually, I, I'm, my efforts here are to be, to be able to live on an income. I'm, I'm putting in a mobile home and eventually carrying down my big old house, because it's just unaffordable to live in it.
That's interesting, because we talk about affordability, and we talk about it in things like this, but not just living.
Individuals, yeah.
Right, yeah, as individuals living, like, this is, as the town, how do we make it affordable for housing it? But maybe as individuals, how do we work to make things affordable as well, yeah?
Well, Nita, can I ask a question? This is kind of a what-if question, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but some of us are at an age where we're going to have the same question. If there were a, oh, senior center type of housing where there would be maybe four or five units strictly that were affordable, would you move to that?
No.
No, okay.
As a last resort.
Okay, all right.
That's your part. I love where I'm.
And I think that's part of some of this issue about building houses. People like their land, and to ask them to give up three acres to put in a housing unit or something, they don't, they aren't going to do it. It's, it's, it, it's historically theirs, and so it, that's been a part of the issue in terms of land.
The two pieces that I sold, one is not suitable for housing, the other, the, you know, new owner doesn't plan on putting a house on it, but this third section that I, I'm looking to sell this year is to a family who want to put a house on it.
But that's okay, because that's income to the town.
Yes.
Well, that is part of, right, like, growth does keep costs down, because it means that it'll pick a tax base.
It can, and it can, it depends on who, depends on moving in.
And growth up to what point, and it starts to then increase the infrastructure needs.
Exactly.
Then it will get to it. But, yeah, growth just in, like, it's almost like there's a benchmark, right? Like, growth up to here will be fine, but once we hit that, and the school has to get bigger. Or we now need a townwide set, you know, like, whatever that is, yet then it becomes an issue.
And also, you want to think about, if, if the town's budget, because of the cost increases of whatever it is to maintain the town, has to go up, then do you need to have development go up equally so that your tax rate stays the same? I mean, so it's kind of an interplay between, between the development, the budget, and the tax rate. And, and just like they said, if you have more development, you're going to have more infrastructure, then you're going to have greater costs. And how are you going to manage to do that? So it's a balancing act.
Are we going to together, I mean, this sounds epic, but are, are, is the, are we going to talk about these different things? Oh, we are, okay.
That was, that was the idea. We do, give you a few minutes to go back around and just review and look at it, and then come back and talk about what's on there. That might be a good time to do it.
Yeah, and we'll read them, too.
Yeah, this might be a good time to do that. Let's just take a few minutes and just look at what everybody else has written, what else is up there, and then we'll come out and we'll talk about the issues themselves. You know what, so, I only have so high expectations.
Yeah, I feel like also, sure, I have to.
Is the one supposed to be, and, and people writing on it, because I think it gets lost.
Remember, that was written, it should be up.
I, I don't think anybody signed.
Jan, it's.
Is that supposed to be one of the land units?
For environmental reasons.
I don't think anybody signed it.
I don't know why we took it. Put it on to the other.
For doing, you put that one over there.
But it's, what I, I just, I've seen this, and I don't think anybody signed it.
No, I think somebody else wrote that, right? Maybe that means it's because they think there's an issue there.
So what I'm here at all, but we're sitting on.
Yeah, we, we do that, we put it up here. Maybe on there's.
I do, but the East Palace.
There's, there's room on that wall right over there.
Yeah, no, we hadn't put it up there.
Yeah, okay.
Which is fair.
So much less far than it did even twenty years ago. Grocery, grocery has gone up twenty-five percent on average since, you know. I mean, I feel that every single.
So let's just put them on, and it's terrible.
My son was in that job.
Yeah, exactly, you do have to.
They have pretty good. We just. But that are. That's what I can. Great.
I know, thank you. Oh, it's already. I mean, I was going to propose it. John, I will have, once this is over, I will have three of those post things to return to you.
Oh, thank you.
I've got one.
I meant to go back, and then they have to stay up for two weeks.
Oh, okay. I have one thing from, well, I guess when I sell two, they're going to be interested in us. But I hope a lot of you, so I just put it in the shed, so I'm good.
No, I appreciate getting those back here. Eventually, I will now.
Well, I, I just suppose that I just kind of go on somebody, I just don't know.
Thank you.
I can wait. I think a lot of people still are reading those, the one, um, five thousand.
Some people think they have to stay up there forever. I've had a couple of, yeah, for like two years.
Well, I just thought.
No, it's basically a couple of warnings, and it only has to be up for fifteen days. So I, I try to take them down, because it just creates confusion if they stay up too long.
Yeah, well, I can take them down and put them on the porch, so if you're going.
I may, I may in the next couple of weeks. Thank you very much.
Or I could, I can drop them off.
Right.
You're swinging by short. Yeah, they work great.
Thank you. Very well. I did forget to mention, if you see something that now sparks something in you, and you want to put it up, you can put something else up, go for it. I guess that's kind of the idea. We need to add now. Add, go ahead.
You have to write the wrong character.
Yeah.
Exactly. Whatever, we can go to Barry.
Oh, I, I totally feel it. I love you. I've been here. I thought we should, Charlotte about it. And.
But they were doing.
Right, right, yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, it was, it was over there, yeah. I thought it was.
Yeah, I should. Wow. Or his dad.
Corridors, and we leave it.
I can just be a municipal service. Doing your card.
No, I think there was five, where it's not, and Palace, or it's, it's a big palace or something.
Yeah, it was something, there was, I don't really.
And there are whole mugs, and why, why is that?
I don't know. It's not, it's not. But you need, you go.
He up the other.
Yeah, exactly. The only thing is, you need to know how to. You go there, and I'm like. Like, you're like. Yeah.
Whisker.
Because we got those, and then, also, we've got some stuff. I go here about species that.
Keep it present.
Yeah. That's the beginning. Couple minutes.
So, yeah.
Two initiatives at the Council.
I haven't seen it.
This is the first year. Okay, well, I think this time around, sometime in Florida.
But I think it keeps happening.
No, it's very huge.
There was a, a commission member for, and I'll see, two thousand and seven. Would you, we're at the.
And now he gave her. Also, a lot of them. Because he was in a, he was in his other house. Was he going to run it?
Jamie, where are you?
No. But it's not going to.
Hanging in there.
It's going to be moved, but when are they coming back to us? Five months.
Oh, yeah.
It's a stage.
As a short person, I should know that. That's a fair, that's a fair, a fair point.
He's still working.
A little bit more for normal size stuff.
John, John, he had more or less, he were.
You keep it out.
Promote somebody's, promote somebody's work. Yes. Oh, I'm tired of this one. Yeah.
And that was a little.
Not by.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ah. I don't think that's a big deal.
Right, right. This thing.
Yeah. Yeah. But I think, yeah. How, how, how it's, you know. So, yeah. You might be able to get, I mean, probably their upgrade orders. We have a couple of.
Okay. I think that's, yeah.
This is why this town plan will affect your life. This is why it should be, not just this hypothetical, dashing, you know, it's.
Right.
Exactly, exactly.
So we don't want to.
It's a good idea, yeah. You might.
It's a difference we call. Right, exactly, exactly, yeah.
Like, I'm going to, like, I'm sort of. I'm going to. The. Shut up. What? Do you? I'm doing, yeah. I'm just. I'm just. So, yeah. Yeah. Like, oh, my.
I just. Yeah.
Yeah. We should. Say. See.
I have to get my. Yeah. The money's there. That's why. I do.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. I don't. 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 I just. Lady, you know, the jet, that all. My answer was, because every time their town fix up, they go, they get them to keep the traffic slow. Exactly.
Well, if you like.
Because how, you like, so.
Right, right.
How. Right. 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 Yeah. That's why. Yeah. It's, it's, isn't that? That's why. How, 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 how,
Generally, I would say why it's happening should be this.
And I think I saw one famous, one of those. Callous is front type. I feel that in that. To the co-op there. We, um, when I was on the annual meeting, we made a profit this year. So Liz has been.
Well, I know we were permitting one, one twelve seat cafe, but I do believe it did not happen. But I can do Wyoming, just open it up. I have the whole kitchen still.
I'm still learning. I, like I said, I looked here.
You've got about thirty minutes left. We could be here a lot longer than that, but we know we can't, I respect the time as well. So what we're gonna, what I'm gonna ask is for anybody who wants to share what they think their top priorities are. And I say that because, one, thirty minutes. It'll be real easy to get down rabbit holes, right? And into the very, the details of everything. And I don't, you don't think that's where we're at yet, right? It's just this first meeting to try and understand what priorities are. Let's just go there first. I will open up a pub in the old cafe that's in my house. For. Yeah, I got it. Putting that in the town plan. And it's done already. And that's it.
You did have a liquor license.
Well, I'd see, I don't know. I know it was permitted as a cafe, but I don't know what. But I have the whole kitchen. And as I told somebody, my father is a chef. He's a classically trained chef and he lives in the cottage that's there. So we just have to figure that out.
You could have someone to guide people home.
That's what my mother's for.
That's what we get the boss for.
Anyway, so just if anybody wants to start, we just wanted to hear what you think the priorities are. Right? And just where we think we should be taking this plan.
More vibrant villages, more affordable housing in villages, thoughtfully designed villages that we, who are already here, can get behind and are part of the development of. And then the pub. East Callis, we need some love. We need some love in East Callis. So the pub in East Callis is a very big priority.
The heck of a story, we'll put a pub in.
That's okay. I, yeah, and vibrant villages and having that be a base. Okay. Anybody else, a priority that you took away even, or something that you took away just from reading everybody else's thoughts? It's a priority.
I just want to counter a question.
Please do.
How do, how would you make them vibrant?
I, I mean, this is the thing is every time he has this conversation about, boy, wouldn't it be great to have a pub here? Or wouldn't it be great if, you know, we could have more young families living in the village or whatever? And everybody just says, oh, septic.
Oh, the septic, no.
And then like, we can't stop there anymore. Like we have to figure it out. You know, how do we get more young people into starter places that are, that are like designed in the way we want them to be? In villages.
So let me, let me ask one other question and then I will shut my mouth. Would you be willing as a town to hire a professional civil engineer or landscape architect to really develop a townwide plan?
More like a physical townwide plan.
Something like that.
Depending on what they have with us. Not septic. Our, so that we, we get to weigh in.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it, it, it's a professional who designs a town layout.
Can you put, put a dollar number on that?
I can't. You would have to do it, the grant feasibility than the three steps of a grant. But, but I think, I mean, if people are looking at what to do with village centers, our village centers today are in River Corridor. Sorry, we can't develop there. So where are we going to develop? Then how do we plan? We're not professional planners. We're not professional landscapers. We're whatever, land developers. You know, but if you hire a professional landscape architect or a civil engineer who could do that, there's a possibility that an overall town plan, East Middlebury did an overall town plan.
I think that one of the challenges with East Callis, I was the person who, I feel like East Callis is a place that can use development both in terms of housing and in terms of a couple of businesses possibility. But one of the real, you know, and it was, that was what it was in the nineteenth century. It was a very bustling place, far more than it is now. One of the total barriers to that is the traffic pattern. That is to say, it doesn't, it feels sundered by the road because practically you know that everyone is going down that road at fifty miles per hour through that town center and there's a constant, like there aren't, there aren't sidewalks. And it changes the way that that area can be used and that, the way that we conceive of that area. Simply the fact of the, the way the traffic moves through there. And if you look at the nineteenth century.
That's doable.
Right. And it's doable to say, like, you start to say, like, what would this look like if we had ways of.
Traffic calm.
That's what Danville used to look like.
Right, 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 right. Exactly, right. And Danville has managed to somehow come together in that way.
Yeah. And the state has traffic, transportation grants available for designated village centers. And I think East Montpelier did that a while back as well to get sidewalks in their little village area. Although it's still kind of a thoroughfare.
But still, it would be, like, it would feel very different than if you felt like you could stick a couple of, you know, four unit or five unit places along the road there, where frankly, there were always tenements. You know, and for factory housing, you know, in the mid nineteenth century.
Maybe some traffic calming or something.
Yeah.
I think thirty-five down to twenty-five would make a big difference.
Yeah. If people would.
If people would follow it. I mean, it has to be a physical way to slow people.
Yeah, so they're doing forty-five on thirty-five now, so bring it down to twenty-five.
But yeah, some, some narrowing down that sort of makes people feel like slowing down.
I mean, even sidewalks do that. It can occur and then you get, you write like.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think Danville has some fences or.
Yeah, they have fences. They put a little eye.
Yeah, medians.
Medians are the, this is the main.
Yeah.
It seems like they're people.
Snowpluggs hate it, but, but it does. Snowpluggs, snow, snow. They hate, they hate those little.
Of course they do. So what?
But, but they do, they're effective.
They work. Yeah, when I first put it in.
Doesn't the state sound powerful?
But it works.
Yes, it does.
Oh, the town does.
But the problem with fourteen is that that is a state road.
Right.
So everything is.
Doesn't the town plow it in the village?
No.
State?
The state, the state, the big orange trucks go through.
But the town positions are low in speed.
They need approval.
But the trucks won't follow that. I mean, we have, we have at each end of East Callis, we have those solar radar, radar thing. Yep. Half the time they don't work. And then when they do work, the trucks just, I mean, they have to barrel up that, that hill and they, they're going forty, forty-five through the center of East Callis and they're doing sixty by my house. Which is a mile up.
And it's not just the trucks.
No, it isn't just the trucks, but, but the trucks and the granite trucks that go along fourteen is, that's, that's the problem with the east. It's just what Tobin said. And that's the traffic pattern. It's too bad that we couldn't have kept the old road going wherever it was historically. And, and then East Callis Village could have been.
Well, I think the interesting thing about the conversation is, is that vibrant villages, they're also very different. Right? The issues that, say, Adamant or Maple Corner are gonna have are different than an East Callis issue. Right? Like, there's gonna be two different issues. So we almost have to come up with, yes, we want vibrant villages, but each plan, even mini-plan for those are gonna be different.
Saying hiring an engineer, still a gender, whatever, is that it's deeply important that the communication be excellent and that the people who are already living in these villages are very instrumental in the development of that design in each of those three different cases. And also that the happening of this make it easier to stay and not harder.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Good point. Anybody else, priorities that they see or that they want to just mention to us? Anybody? No? Is there something that stood out to you as you looked through them? Was there, was there a theme? Was there like, housing has a lot. Was there, was there anything that was like, yeah, everybody's saying roughly the same thing? Is there something particular? Yeah, to you.
Uh, one thing I noticed is just a lot of people commented on the volunteerism situation. A lot of the volunteers who lived down the lot for this town are tired of it. They've been doing it for years and years and they want the younger folks to step up, except there's not a lot of younger folks to step up. And how do we do that? And then another thing I've heard, kind of correlated with that, is people, younger people who grew up here saying, we used to have this. We used to have these dinners and these dances and these parades and why don't any of those things happen anymore? But they're, you know, it's, how do we make that happen? How do we get people involved emotionally enough to do the, the legwork behind all these things that do help us come together and meet people we don't know and see people we haven't seen in a long time? Like, the amount of joy I've seen in the East Callis politics since we started it, like, I was really worried it was not gonna go well. It was gonna be five people, but people who hadn't talked to each other in years, even though they all live within a few miles of each other, like, it was such an easy thing to put together. And I want to convey to more people that I know who are afraid to take the leap, like, it's, it could be very simple, but that's how we build those relationships. That's how we get people volunteering for things. That's how a lot of those little things snowball into bigger things.
Yeah. And I don't know who was, maybe it was you. There, there's two post-its on municipal services and it was about that. It was like, somebody wrote that, you know, it's a citizen-based government and we need people to do that. And, and when you get too far away from it, it's taking away a reason for people to be neighbors to each other, right? Like, so I think that that's a, it's not a tangible thing too, that I think is interesting in a town plan. Right? You're talking about something more visionary and getting more volunteers as opposed to build the roads this way. And do, right? It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a people thing. And I, and I like that, so.
Some people just plain aren't interested in participating in anything.
Not true, or not, I was gonna say something true. You're not, you're not, you're not wrong.
My sister who lives in Diablo, she doesn't want to do, have anything to do with it. She doesn't have front porch for him. She doesn't, nothing. Like, I, I know she, I want to know what's going on. But, but, you know, there are people like that that are, you can't, no matter what you do, you can't get them interested.
But even the thing is that what's beautiful is that even somebody who doesn't want to go to the party, like, I don't want to go to the party, they might want to make brownies for the party and drop them off. And then that's, that's equal. Like, it, it's just, if you want to, you know, buy the cups and then go home and watch television, that is still participated.
She always buys an apple pie when the church does their sales.
Well, I think it's, it's about, it's about showing people that there are different ways to do it. You don't have to be everyone, and, and also that more people makes less work too, right? When more people do that. So I may not be able to do things because I have kids or something like that, but I can do a little bit of something. Right? And so I think that's, that's to that point. Yeah, Barbara.
I, I noticed how many stickers around made reference to seniors and accommodating seniors. We're all aging in place.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
Affordability, obviously, with the high cost of homes that are just going up and up and up. And we wonder how we're gonna get more people in here. And, you know, it's for younger people, it's, it goes in the opposite direction, so it's not.
Do you think it's just housing or is it just affordability of living?
Living, taxes.
Right?
Jobs.
Yeah. Cost of living.
Yeah.
And one thing that might change the direction of settlement here is the fact of the infrastructure, in, in the, in particular, the internet. That, I mean, you can actually see people, like, because there's a question, like, if people want to move here, what the hell are they gonna do when they get here? And but, I mean, you know, there are, now, there's the possibility of really running a professional life from your home because of that. So I'm hoping that that will have a positive effect.
That's a big accomplishment.
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I was talking to Jan about, well, everybody was talking, it's just the idea of like, so many people work from home or they can have home-based businesses and they have things. And so how do we support that? Like, how can we as a town, just in general, support that people? I mean, so I've turned that cafe in my house right now into my office. I've got like a little conference table, like, if you all need a place to meet, just, just go there. I have the doors unlocked. I'm telling you that, take stuff. But, right, but people don't need to, to travel necessarily to do their work. And it's home-based businesses and we want to support that. We just gotta figure out how and what that means.
Well, then we want somewhere to go to have a sandwich where we can run into somebody.
Right.
We do now.
We do, but I'm, we do, but, but that goes back to the idea of more, more, you know, federates working from home and having more places to go where we can be social is good.
Yeah. Anything else stands out to you?
I think I was interested that there were two comments, to keep the roads as they are and to pave the roads.
There were two, yeah. I noticed that too.
There was a few moments of conflict. Made that question particularly exciting. But, but my argument is always just that if you pave the roads, then people want to live here. And that would be.
And go too fast.
You know, I, that's, to me, I just feel like it's a good deterrent.
As part of the growth plan.
So, I should say, so I come from Massachusetts and I, you know, went through in the first twenty or twenty-five years of my life, the movement of my town from being a totally rural town to being one that was entirely a bedroom community. In fact, I remember the planning meeting where they literally announced, well, we've reached what's called maximum build-out. Every parcel of land has been, you know, like, is a, it was a smaller acreage than ours, but anyway. But, and it just, you know, like, it happens very slowly. It happens very logically. And you have to kind of keep this plan in mind if you're going to avoid discovering that suddenly the place has changed entirely. And often the people who were most resistant to controls early on are the ones who are most irritable about the changes that occur because of that.
Anything else?
I'll bring up the conservation. I feel like maybe it's time to revisit our zoning districts and really think about, you know, a lot has changed at the state level with conservation stuff. And I think in a really good way with the, this new thirty by thirty law and trying to conserve more. And make a more thoughtful conservation design, kind of like, what are the important areas? Instead of the way our zoning approaches that now is like, well, most of the town is this, you know, rural residential area and kind of here the big picture ways you're allowed to develop that. I, I think it would be helpful to be a little more fine tuned and what are these core habitat blocks that we should really be trying to protect? How's that look?
What is the thirty by thirty?
Oh, sorry, the idea that we should have thirty percent of Vermont land should be conserved by twenty thirty and fifty percent by twenty fifty, which means like conservation easements somehow protected from development.
Currently, ten percent of Callis's acreages in conservation. And just a guess, looking at the, at the overview map and the UVA, the current use overlay, it looks like more than half of Callis acreage is actually in current use. So it's, it's working for us. So we're fifty there, but only ten is, is actually in conservation. So it's in a large part of sort of public education effort, you know, which is what we talk about, we hope we're gonna start doing in the Conservation Commission, because that's, it's one important area where we should be doing more. Just reaching out to people and trying to work with people and actually making a point to go to people and, and sit down and talk to them about these things.
So somewhere I read, do you all agree that we are a bedroom community?
By definition.
It seemed to have been. Because we don't have businesses.
Yeah, bedroom community is just the idea that you, you just sleep and live there, but you work somewhere else. Yeah. Which I think the nature of what the town is, it's going to be that. You're not gonna get the majority of people working here.
I don't know, since COVID, so many people work.
More people are gonna work. I never leave my house. High work remote in it.
And now that the internet, CD5 and all that, is here, I think that, that could.
Does the demographic numbers we can get, will it be able to tell us anything like that about like how many people are working from home?
I think so. Oh, not, I don't know, working from home, but.
Uh, it depends, because when you file your federal income tax.
Right.
If you say twenty-five percent or whatever it is in the Lister file anymore, you know, so much, then you know that it's a home business. But interestingly, my daughter works for the state and she works remotely, but she cannot do that because the state's paying her. It has to be a home-owned business in order to calculate that twenty-five percent off.
So it depends on how you define it, because you just used the term a home business. And I wasn't referring to a home business. I was referring to people who are employed by somebody else, but they're working from home now.
Right. That's true, but then they're, yeah, yeah.
You just say you can't track that.
But you can't really track that.
Well, you can at least you can track the number of. They do keep track of that.
Uh, yeah.
How many people are like sitting by a computer using a heat sensor?
I think it's, it's an interesting question. You don't need to find, you need to find any type of data on what that is. Because that's, and you're right, there are two different things. There's home-based business and then there's I'm working from home, which are two different, two different things.
But if I'm a home-based business, I maybe can have one or two employees.
True.
So then that brings other people into town and, and buying food at our various stores.
And they need to hit the pub after work.
Exactly.
But I, I like the question. I think it's some good data that we could try. I mean, I don't know how good of data you could find on that, but I think that that's worth at least trying.
Go back to that survey issue again.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Anybody else? Yeah.
Uh, just as we talk about all these things that we. Uh, just as we talk about all these things that we want and we should change, I'd be curious, have we surveyed, like, what do you love about Callis? Why did you move here if you moved here and why did you stay? Have you stayed? Have you done this sort of research before? Because as someone who's lived in four different states, like, I have a lot of feelings about why we moved here and why we don't want to leave because of the great things. But I would like to put those on the table and make sure that we work to maintain or really work with other things.
You know, one thing that occurred to me in, in this meeting is that, and I know that this doesn't lead to anywhere very logistically meetable or something, but, you know, when you were talking about staying here and you're talking about, like, I don't want to live in a town, I, I feel like a priority should be to protect the interest somehow of the people who are already here and struggling to live here. And that I don't want to live in a town where people are leaving because they can't afford it. And, and I don't, I don't want to live in a town that's, that's comprised entirely of, of migratory money. That sounds terrible. I can't believe I just said that. I mean, I want to live in a place where there's a huge range of people. And I don't, I don't want to live in a homogenous place. And so if somehow in all of the metrics and decisions that we make, that is somewhere in, in our minds. I don't know.
I feel like that's a really significant issue given our demographics and the fact that over the next ten years, there's going to be a lot of shifting, right? People are going to be...
I think we got to get way ahead of that ball.
As is climate refugees.
Yes, exactly. It was a whole different...
And I think that's, I think that's the challenge, at least from my perspective as new here, is that balance between those things. Like, how do you do that? How do you know that things are going to change in the next, and how do you get ahead of it while, but keeping what you like and love about it? Because that, sometimes those aren't the same things. And so how do you do that the right way, I think?
Working in the town office, we have the opportunity to see people who are moving into town, moving to Vermont in Callis because they're climate refugees. They moved here from California or someplace else in the south. So...
And they only stayed here. I'm sorry.
Um, so you've got, you've got a room of volunteers sitting here. So as we think about whether or not it's feasible to do a survey as part of this, you might want to consider, so that it's not one more thing that the Planning Commission has to take on and do, you might want to consider the idea of developing a volunteer survey work group. And you've got a target audience right here.
For all the nosy people.
You're already doing so much though, Charlotte.
All right, anything else?
I, I have one question about what your next steps are. So with all these great ideas that you guys are going to take back and synthesize and analyze, analyze and so forth, what will be your process for, so let's say you read these different sticky notes and you're like, what a great idea. I wonder what he meant by that. I wonder why it's behind us thinking. How will you know who to follow up with?
That's a, really good question. We, we only had your addresses on the site.
I know, you don't know what he wrote.
We don't know, and we don't know what people wrote.
I should have had you all put your email on there.
Or, or your initials or something.
Well, the initials on that, oh, you know what Larry put on because he put Larry Bush on it.
And none of everybody necessarily wants to be contacted about their idea. But I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking the next steps. If you guys read something and went, I wonder what was behind that. What did he mean? How are we going to follow up?
Email addresses. In order to implement that, we would have to have people who want to be contacted to put their email address as they go outside, put their email address next to their name. And we could tabulate all of this. And where we have questions, we would just write next to the, you know, what the heck is happening? And it would be up to you. We could send it out to all of you and it would be up to you to get back in touch with us.
Yeah, this, this could be put into a, on a spreadsheet with the notes and then just send that out to everyone who's here that wants to be contacted.
So, so we wouldn't, it wouldn't be certain that we would get an answer to those questions.
And even if you didn't have an answer about it, but if I saw my little notes on your list and I could say, I wrote that one, I wrote that one, I wrote that one.
Good, yeah, we can, we definitely put it together.
That's something we can do.
Yeah, and I think that the next step is, one, yes, to get the information together, synthesize and put it all together. But then I think we've, we've kind of been talking as we've gone about maybe doing more meetings. Um, we've talked about that Friends of Callis is doing their spaghetti dinner and that, trying to have something there. Um, I've talked about how the school sends out the entire directory, right, of all the parents and me trying to, yeah, it's just all the information's right there. Be glad you don't want to, you know. And like, getting, getting different viewpoints, like me going to parents of kids at the school and asking the same questions and trying to start to bring all that together.
So we also have town meeting coming up on our fifth. So either if you or Jan or Nomi or Gary or Vicky or whoever wants to contact the moderator, Gus Seeling, and ask to have two minutes on the agenda that day.
Good, we can do that. Yeah, and I think we've also just talked about now, as we talked about, we had talked to Planning Commission to have a survey and we started making questions and then we kind of stopped because we said, let's have a meeting first and let's see what, and then we go. But I think maybe now we might go in the direction of having a survey.
We know what questions to ask.
Yeah, now we know, we kind of have a better idea of what to ask. And so I think that that may be coming too, then, in the future. Does that answer the question? I mean, it's, you, Jan, you want to say anything or anybody else about that, where we go next? You're not, you're unanimous.
Your idea of a work group is, is really cool. When you brought it up, I actually was saying, okay, how many houses are there in town? And if I visited twenty of them a week, how long would it take?
I, I think the idea of the work group would be if you are interested in helping the Planning Commission in, in the survey, you know, we're not saying everybody has to be on the Planning Commission, but we're saying people can help us do the work or help the Planning Commission do the work.
Well, if you, if you put your emails on that, that can be put, one of the things that we put in an email app to all of you is to say, you know, and if you would like to help with, you know, a work group for the sur, for doing a survey, just email us back. And like, we could, we could do that, so, to you.
I'm, I'm long lensing visiting everyone. I know we've talked about this in the context of neighbors helping neighbors, but some people is, some people aren't going to answer the door to Gary if they don't know who Gary is. Like, he looks lovable, but I'm not going to let a strange man my door. So make sure you have people throughout town who live, you know, make sure North Callis is represented. Make sure South Callis is represented. Make sure, you know, make sure there's, are representatives who are willing to go see people who live within half a mile of them and that way it's a familiar face. If you can say, that's my house, that's my dog that, sorry, they barked at me that one time, like, and then you know the person who's coming to ask you the questions.
And I think a working survey does help with that too.
Yeah.
Because then you can just go to people you know, go, hey, will you fill this out?
Yeah.
Well, I think, I think this has been very productive. I know that...
It's been fantastic.
It really has.
Fantastic.
We thank you all for being here Sunday afternoon. You're all here. Thank you.